Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Monday, April the 7th at 2025, starting at 6:00 PM. May I please have a mover and a seconder to call to order? Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Cressman, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And I will ask councillor Cressman to read our territorial acknowledgement.
We have gathered enrollment township on the traditional territory of the neutral, Anashavi, Otashoni, and Mississauga peoples. We also want to acknowledge the importance of the Dish with One Spoon Covenant, a peace agreement made between indigenous nations before the Europeans arrived. It characterizes our collective responsibility to each other and Mother Earth. We should take only what we need, leave enough for others, and keep the dish clean. By acknowledging this covenant and the First Nations, Métis and Inuit people, we are reminded of our important connection to this land where we live, learn, and work together as a community.
Thank you very much, councillor. We do have a few additions to the agenda under item 7.1, Specific Interest Delegations. We have two speaking to item 7.1.1 and one speaking to item 10.1, as well as item 10.5. The petition for drainage works was also added to the agenda. May I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as presented? Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Martin, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest, councillor Cressman?
Yes, agenda item 6.2, Official Plan Amendment Application and Draft Plan of Subdivision for Nafsinger Road in New Hamburg, I have a pecuniary interest. The preliminary engineering for the site was done by Walder Fady, a company that my oldest son Garth is CEO of.
That's been noted, thank you very much, councillor. Any other conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we do have two public meetings this evening. We will hear all interested people who wish to speak on these matters. If the decision of council of the township of Wilmot is appealed by the owner, applicant, or public body to the Ontario Land Tribunal, the tribunal will not add another person or public body as party to the hearing unless they made an oral submission at the public meeting or written submission before the bylaw is passed. So I now declare the public meeting open. Persons attending as delegations at this meeting for any of these items are required to leave their names and addresses, which will become part of the public record, and you are hereby advised that this information may be posted on the township's official website along with your email address if provided. I'd like to remind all delegations for this evening of some guidelines for participation. Applicants and agents of applicants will have 10 minutes to speak, and all other delegations will be given seven minutes to speak. If you conduct yourself in any of the following manners, it will result in an immediate muting and removal from the meeting, including interrupting councillors, staff, or other delegates, derogatory statements about councillors, staff, or others, and hate speech or defamatory comments. We do have two public meetings this evening, so we will begin with item 6.1, and this is the zone application change for Hink Street in New Hamburg. To get this recommendation on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Dunstall. And just to clarify, this is a public meeting in respects to zone change application 02-25-73, Hink Street, New Hamburg, and I will invite our manager of planning and economic... My apologies. I am actually inviting... Sorry, just one moment, I'm being told that my notes are incorrect, so I just want to make sure I'm getting the right staff person. I'm going to be inviting Mr. Miller from our development department to please introduce our report, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Solomon. Yes, so this application is seeking to rezone the subject property from Zone 10 Industrial, and some of which is actually Zone 3 Residential, to Zone 7 Commercial, and eliminate the residential uses that would otherwise be permitted within Zone 7. So, again, this application effectively has the ability of removing those industrial uses and furthering the transition of this building into a multi-tenant slash light industrial slash commercial building. So the building previously contained a foundry operation, and since then, the property has slowly transitioned to a commercial slash light industrial building as the surrounding area has developed around it. The building now contains uses that are largely commercial in nature, such as pet food packaging, there's a takeout restaurant, as well as a dance studio and office space. The existing takeout restaurant that is there was permitted by way of a temporary use bylaw that was previously approved by the previous term of council in 2021, and which expired in 2024. And so this temporary use bylaw allowed for that takeout restaurant use to be evaluated over the course of three years to see if there was any compatibility issues during the course of the operation, that business. So now that that temporary use bylaw has expired, the owner of the property has been seeking to, again, transition that plaza and look to allow for some additional commercial uses in that plaza. So again, to give permanent status to that takeout restaurant, allow for... to give future consideration to other potential commercial uses, this property is proposed to be placed within Zone 7. So additionally, this application would remove some of our heavier industrial uses that are allowed within Zone 10, such as manufacturing or foundry-type uses, and again, put that within the commercial zone. The zoning that is proposed is in line with other commercial plazas in New Hamburg, such as a Scram and Jam Plaza and the Dollar Haven Plaza, so it is identical to that, and staff have the opinion that the proposed zoning represents an appropriate reuse of the property and would minimize any future land use compatibility issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions, councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, mayor. Switching it over to commercial would reduce noise, large trucks coming in and out, right, for manufacturing, so typically, when I look at stuff like that, I think that may be a better fit when it's coming up right beside a residential area. Would you say that that's, between commercial and industrial, the impact on the residents nearby?
Through you, Mayor Solomon, I think that's a fair summary. The tenants that are currently in there are not proposed to be changing. They are looking at bringing in additional tenants, such as potentially a laundromat. So yes, I would definitely say that a use like that would have less noise issues than, per se, a foundry, that where the zoning would already outright permit a use like that. So the Zone 10 is very broad, allows for anything, transportation, manufacturing, so through transitioning that into commercial, certainly, yes, there would be less noise impacts presumably.
Thank you. Councillor Cressman?
Through you, mayor, to either acting CEO Clark or to Mr. Miller, manager Miller? No, well, sorry, don't want to get your handle. Anyhow, regardless, the question is tax implications. A part of this was residential, to have it entirely commercial, and then to change some from industrial to commercial, what's the implications for tax revenue?
Through you, Mayor Solomon, I can speak a little bit to this, but if acting CEO Clark would like to jump in at any point, obviously, feel free. So the zoning of a property is different than the assessment of a property would be, so the assessment is largely based on the current use of the site. So in spite of the actual, the parking lot being residentially zoned, it is fully taxed, to my knowledge, as an industrial building, and then so, again, MPAC is notified, they're the ones that do the assessment, but the zoning is somewhat separate to that, yes.
Any other questions, councillors? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone from the gallery who would like to speak to committee regarding this matter, as it is an open meeting? Okay, anyone online requesting to speak?
Through the mayor, there is no one online.
Okay, thank you, and one final time, just to follow proper protocol, I need to confirm that there are no further attendees, both virtual or in person, that would like to speak on this matter. Okay, seeing none. Committee, I don't see any other comments or questions from yourselves. Oh, councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Solomon, I just have one question, and that was regarding the one letter that came in with raising a concern about parking. I don't know if that has to do with the construction that is happening on Hink Street, is this something we should be concerned about? I'm not regularly there, whenever I've been there, I haven't seen a concern about parking, but I was just curious if this is something we should discuss any further.
Through you, Mayor Solomon, yes, I did have a discussion with the property owner regarding that comment that came in. There was a suggestion about putting additional signage up to let customers know that there's parking in the rear. There is ample parking in the back of the property, but people seem to be drawn to park along James Street. James Street does have depth for like a mid-side pickup truck to be parking there, but again, we were working with the owner to put up additional signage, and failing that, bylaw enforcement tools are available to, you know, potentially enforce off-street parking regulations.
Any final questions or comments, councillors? Seeing none, I will call vote then, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto item 6.2, and this is also a public meeting, and the recommendation is that report DS 2025-04 be received for information. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Sedu. And again, this is a public meeting in respect to Official Plan Amendment Application 01-24, Draft Plan of Subdivision Application 30T-24601, Zone Change Application 02-24, Nafsinger Road, New Hamburg, and I will now invite our senior development planner, Andrew Martin. Okay, clearly, your titles were swapped on my agenda, so in fact, it will be our manager of planning and economic development, Andrew Martin, who will be introducing the report.
Thank you, Mayor Solomon. I'm going to leave my comments fairly brief, because the Dillon Consulting team is here to do a presentation, but the purpose of this meeting is to hear from members of the public on three applications that are proposed, an official plan amendment, a subdivision application, and a zoning amendment application. A little bit of history on this property, it was brought into the township urban area through Regional Plan Amendment Number 6, as well as Bill 162, so the lands are designated in the regional plan. To confuse that, the regional plan is now also the responsibility of the township of Wilmot, but the township of Wilmot also has its own official plan at this point, so ultimately, we're dealing with two official plans. The lands are designated in the regional plan, need to be designated in the local plan, and that will be resolved through the pending update and new township official plan, but at this point, that's what we're dealing with. Ultimately, the official plan amendment proposes three items. One is to look at the land uses within a portion of the cache development, which is identified as employment. The... An amendment would be proposed to allow for flexibility of uses in that area, so for both employment, rather, and commercial uses. That was originally planned as part of their application process, but changes to the provincial planning statement prescribe specifics to... tied to employment uses, so they want to continue to have the flexibility of what was proposed at the time of application. The other component of the amendment is to deal with the density calculations to allow for uses other than a single and semi, but not prescribe them to be something other than a townhome. So basically, that ensures the density calculation is providing uses other than singles and semis, but a townhome is one of those uses that are not a single or semi. The way the current regional plan sets that out, the density would be calculated, a townhome would be included in that range of housing types, so essentially, it's allowing for the density to be looked at as it's set out in the current township official plan. And then the third piece is actually to bring the lands into the township official plan, as suggested. The subdivision application then would propose the actual development of the site, residentially, approximately 677 units on 43 hectares, and about 14 hectares of employment. And then finally, the zone change application proposes to implement that development through the specific regulations for the housing, as well as the uses in the employment area. I'll leave my comments at that, because, again, the Dillon team is here to present in more detail, but staff are certainly here to answer any questions, and as the development proceeds, the technical documents are finalized through the review process, and staff have had an opportunity to review any comments that have been received from the public. We would then return to council with a detailed report and recommendation.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for manager Martin? Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, mayor. I noticed that there was some concern about the distance from the local plant, and my understanding is that with the employment and the commercial land, that it will equate the same as the Wilmot Woods, 300 meters, is that correct?
Through Mayor Solomon, so the provincial D6 guidelines provide a separation from those types of land uses, so Wilmot Woods, for instance, that development maintains a 300-meter separation from the facility to the homes. In this case, the employment parcel actually provides that buffer, so the homes themselves would be beyond the required setback from the industrial operations.
And also that there's no blast radius, is that... Do you know?
Through Mayor Solomon, there's certainly some comments to that effect. Certainly, it is our understanding that the operations don't involve those types of materials, the actual production of the chemicals that may cause those issues. They utilize chemicals that were produced otherwise may have that impact, but the actual utilization of them on-site doesn't involve those criteria, so the D6 guidelines are the ones that apply in this instance.
And so we know that for sure, that's...
Correct, yes, that is a statement of fact.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, councillors, from manager Martin? Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I guess a question here regarding the servicing, and I'm just curious how they intend to bring the servicing in, from which direction. Does it potentially pass through other developments or other lands, and will that potentially hinder this development from moving forward, or what would the, I guess, the chronological order be?
Through Mayor Solomon, so the functional servicing plan that's provided at this point is the preliminary plan for development. Things could change, but as it stands right now, from a sanitary servicing perspective, the sewage would flow through the Wilmot Woods development, ultimately, under the railway tracks, through the employment lands, across the highway into the treatment plant. So there are reliance on other developments, those, the conditions of draft approval for Wilmot Woods provided for that accommodation within that development, so that was identified early in the process from Cache, and Wilmot Woods was receptive of including those provisions to make sure that, you know, they can happen accordingly, and then downstream from that, those provisions are in place as well.
Councillor Wilkinson again?
Thank you, through the chair, as a follow-up to that, so they're essentially getting the servicing from what is the West, and coming down that way. With regards to, say, the cost associated with what would take place on the Wilmot Woods site, is the taxpayer going to be on the hook for loaning that money, or is that a DC that we can essentially collect from that developer when the time comes, even if they choose not to develop, because right now, it's sitting vacant?
Through Mayor Solomon, so components of the servicing work was identified in the DC bylaw, specifically the railway crossing, so that piece, as it was part of a larger trunk sewer system. The actual... If there is work required within Wilmot Woods to upsize or change the depth of the sewer to accommodate Cache, there would be work between those developers for cost sharing. From a municipal perspective, the costs from the municipality are identified in the DC bylaw for those factors, such as the railway crossing. If through the ultimate servicing strategy, there was components of upsizing or deepening of the sewer to accommodate development beyond this, from a municipal perspective, then those items would be identified and ultimately need to be accounted for within the DCs.
Any additional questions for manager Martin? Okay, seeing none, we do have two registered delegations on this item, and the first is the applicant's agent, Michelle McCarthy of Dillon Consulting Limited, and Michelle, thank you for joining us, you will have 10 minutes, and I believe you have a presentation as well.
I do. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, my name's Michelle McCarthy with Dillon Consulting, thank you for your time this evening. I am also joined this evening by representatives from Cache, Marcus Gagliardi, and Erica Forrest, as well as Matt Nomiya from Maltrefiti. So we have a team here, if there are questions, we're here to respond and hear from you. Further to the staff report and presentation, we're here on behalf of the landowner Cache to share information on their development proposal and look forward to your feedback. So the subject lands are municipally known as 1265 and 1299 Waterloo Street, and they're 43 hectares, or about 106 acres. The site abuts the rail tracks to the south, Nafsinger to the east, the farm parcels to the north, and an agricultural field, as well as the approved Wilmot Woods subdivision to the west, as you can see on the slide. The site is bisected by the Ivan Gingrich Drain, which is previously conveyed to the township of Wilmot. The... Go ahead, thank you. The lands are currently vacant and used for agricultural purposes, and just to build on the bit of land use history that Mr. Martin presented, through regionally adopted Regional Official Plan Amendment 6 in August of 2022, there were two-thirds of the Cache lands brought into the township urban area, and the lands south of the drain were identified for employment uses at that time, and the lands north of the drain were identified as township urban area intended for residential use, and then all of Cache's land holdings were then brought into the township urban area through the minister's decision on ROPA 6 in April of 2023. And this development proposal aims to align the township official plan and zoning bylaw to the decision on Regional Official Plan Amendment 6. Go ahead, thanks. So just to orient you quickly, because this plan is turned, the right side of the page is south, the top is east, left is north, and then west is the bottom. The concept plan shows the range of residential uses proposed on the site, including singles, traditional townhomes, as well as rear lane townhomes, and a multi-residential block as well, up against the drain. The three blocks south of the drain are intended for light industrial and complementary commercial uses. There are two parks included in the plan, as you can see, as well as two stormwater management ponds adjacent to the drain. The lands will be fully serviced through planned infrastructure, and there is sufficient capacity in the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate the proposal. And it is a little difficult to see at this scale, but the multi-use trail is included in the plan, it extends across the entirety of the frontage of Nafsinger, along the western edge just north of the drain, through the drain, it also connects to... Out to Nafsinger and to the Wilmot Woods subdivision to the west, and so this provides a really excellent opportunity to connect up to the schools, down to the rec center, and throughout these neighborhoods. And the proposal represents a logical extension of the planned New Hamburg urban area. Go ahead, thanks. This graphic just shows the proposed development in the context of the surrounding community, the lands are identified in blue there, and it does include the approved subdivision to the west, just for context. Go ahead. Here, on this slide, we've summarized the work completed to date, but I really just wanted to highlight one kind of key point here that we're really excited about. Our team is exploring partnership with LINK, specifically on the mill development in New Hamburg, and for those, I'm sure most are familiar with LINK here, but in case anyone is not, they're a local organization, extremely community-oriented, focused on within rural communities, and they're currently advancing the redevelopment of the mill, and is planned for 31 units, minimum of which their goal is to have 50% of those units be offered at affordable rates. And Cache would like to contribute to this project directly and support the creation of affordable housing units right here in this community. So we are excited about that. This slide also includes all of the other information in terms of what the process has included, the studies that have been completed to date, and where we are in the We have included here some renderings, just to provide a visual of the type of quality housing that Cache plans to build in this neighborhood, and keep in mind that these aren't designed particularly for this development, they're provided for illustrative purposes, the detailed design phase will happen at later stages of the development process, but these are similar product in other areas, so this one is showing the single detached units. On the following slide, we have the traditional townhome rendering, followed by these... This is the rear lane townhomes, this is a front elevation, so this would be what would front onto Nafsinger, and then following that, that's the back of those rear lane townhomes. And the multi-residential block is actually, as was mentioned earlier, it's planned to be intentionally flexible. We want to understand the community need and desire, and we want to understand, for example, is there a need for a certain amount of seniors housing, is there a need and desire for ground floor daycare, for example, and other complementary neighborhood commercial uses? And similarly, for the blocks south of the drain, we are proposing flexibility in the permitted uses there as well. Specifically, we're interested in introducing permissions for a food store, which is aligned with the intent of this area to really provide transition between the employment area for south of the rail and the planned residential uses north of the drain, and in recognition that community amenity in the form of like just a grocery store or a market or something like that, where you can go and grab some milk and your essentials, is really important to support these residential neighborhoods that are going in. Go ahead, thanks. So just to sum up, the lands are located in an area that is intended for growth, it's well-connected to both community facilities, the transportation network, it incorporates the multi-use trail into the design. The plan provides for a range, a mix of housing units, different options, different densities, to meet the needs of both... The intent is to meet the needs of both the current and future residents of the township of Wilmot, and our team is actively working with, as I mentioned, a local affordable housing provider to contribute funding that would stay right here in this community. The plan also proposes employment uses, as well as complementary commercial that I just spoke about, and we believe that this proposal is aligned with the township's long-term vision for growth, and provides both housing opportunities, as well as opportunities for economic development. growth and provides both housing opportunities as well as opportunities for economic development. So, Madam Chair, members of council, thank you for your consideration. I'd also like to take a moment to thank staff for their continued professionalism and a really positive working relationship, and we would be happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. I believe Counselor Dunstall has a question.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, the multi-residential building, how many stories is that and how many units where I couldn't see?
I know, the plan is hard to see at that scale, I apologize. So it is planned to be up to six stories and 60 units at this time.
Six stories and 60 units? So that'd be 10 units per floor?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, just to the point made earlier, the situation right now is that we're open and we're flexible in terms of what that building may look like and whether it's ground floor commercial, residential above, looking for improvement.
One of the other, thank you. One of the other things I was going to ask you, which you actually already spoke about, was for seniors and as well as daycare. So those are things that you were willing to look at as this progresses.
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I do have a few questions, but I guess I could start more so related to the employment lands. And I mean, there you've sort of got a couple buildings maybe plotted out, but what are the plans for the type of building or the type of jobs that you intend to sort of see go in this area?
Through you, Madam Chair. The plan for this point is we have it kind of blocked out and a long list of potential users. So I think it's a little too early to tell in terms of what actually may land there. There's things like storage, there's things like the grocery store use, there's traditional kind of light industrial uses, even the farm equipment that could be in this area as well. Ultimately, we want to have the permissions be very flexible, to be able to respond to community need, market need, and what would be successful in this area.
Through the chair, appreciate the response. I mean, I agree, it is obviously still premature in the process. You did make mention, obviously, of the multi-story building. I'll be honest, I feel like six stories is pretty high. I'd like to see that maybe a smidge lower, maybe up to four stories or three. But I certainly also appreciate what you're suggesting with potentially having ground floor commercial. I think we see a lot of that development happening in Waterloo region, but in terms of where this area is, I mean, another concern I have, and I'm looking to hear addressed, is transportation, right? I'm not quite sure, if you don't own a car, what the plan is to get people to and from this neighborhood. So that might be something that I'd like to see addressed, and I realize that that will involve the region. But additionally, what kind of services do you intend to bring to the area on that ground floor or intend to attract that could be a benefit to the whole community, but also the immediate community? So that would be something I'd be interested in your response on, please.
I do think, through you, Madam Chair, that it is early days in terms of what may end up on that particular block. I think that there's an openness and a willingness to partner with the township. Staff have been wonderful in terms of providing input and feedback. And there is a certain staging that goes along with any type of commercial amenity, even at a neighborhood scale. If it's a convenience store and it's there too early, it's not going to survive. So there is a progression, and we would be interested in feedback, further feedback on what might be successful in that area from the community, from counselors, from anyone.
Thank you. And I will just chime in on the transit element. Tomorrow, Regional Council is receiving the draft 10-year Transit Master Plan, which includes specifically a rural transit master plan component. And they are aware, as this is swatted for future development, they are aware and staff are already, not that they have a concrete plan, but it is being included in their planning long-term to be able to connect these types of developments. But did you have a follow-up, Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Through the chair, and again, I'm providing this in terms of feedback, or at least what I see, right? I understand you won't have an answer to everything. Another thing maybe to mention to the region or something you'd like to see working with is that I know that you're going to look at the multi-use trail along Nafseger. I'm also concerned about the traffic on that road in terms of needing turning lanes or potential traffic control. Again, I realize that that falls outside of our scope at the township, but I would like to see some sort of plan come forward that at least explores with the region that you've done this. Because someone who travels that road probably at least four or five times a week, that can be pretty hectic, and if we're adding this, it will continue to add to it. So I want to make sure that we have taken the appropriate measures from that standpoint. The only other thing I would add, I mean, personally, and this is just my belief, I would like to see more single-family homes. And maybe even if they are smaller, I think there is a demand in the market, especially with a younger, up-and-coming family, to have more property or at least a detachment from their neighbors. So if there's a possibility to rework that in any way, to see more single-family homes or even smaller single-family homes, like I think we can all agree we're missing those old wartime homes, those would be great to see.
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle, if you'd like to make a comment?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items. The traffic study has been conducted in accordance with the terms of reference. I was consulted on with staff in the region. There's all kinds of obviously detailed recommendations in there. And the ultimate intersection design and treatment is to be determined, but there is also a longer-term plan for Wilmot, or sorry, Nafseger to be urbanized. And so the form and function of that road may evolve over time as well. So to your point, it's definitely something that we need to be in close communication, both with the township and the region on, but duly noted. And to your point about the singles, I appreciate that feedback, and it's something that there's a constant need for balance, right? We heard Mr. Martin comment earlier around the 30% of the development that is a township official plan policy, and the region is in fact even over and above that for different type of built form that really promotes density and more compact development. So appreciate that feedback.
Through the chair, not to start a debate, that's the regional official plan that dictated that out, that we didn't get any say over. But I agree that there is a desire to have balance. But I mean, in speaking as someone of this generation, I'm fortunate enough to live in a single-family home. I know that my peers are aspiring to do the same. Not everyone can. So maybe to see that, that would be something, again, you may see varying demand, but I personally would like to see that.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. This is probably more so for Manager Martin. Was there an issue for access for the fire department if it was six stories? I can't remember.
Through you, Mayor Solon. There was certainly discussion with taller building in Baden, but ultimately, there was no building code-related items for servicing a building of that size, so.
Any other comments or questions from Michelle counselors? Okay, I will just add in my comments. Thank you again very much. The LINK's opportunity sounds very exciting, and I'm glad that you guys are looking to address affordable housing in our community. And maybe just to tack on a little bit to Counselor Wilkinson's comment, which I know I've spoken to all developers in the community about, but looking at accessible units as well, including single detached homes that have zero barrier entry, because we do have an aging population as well as many people with mobility issues and having them engaged in the community is also a very important thing. So just wanted to note that, and thank you again very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
We do have one more delegate on this topic, and I would like to invite up Mr. Barry Wolf to address committee. And Barry, you will have seven minutes. Thank you very much for joining us.
Would you put that last slide that you had on before I start, please? The thank you one? Great, thanks. I'd like to start with my concluding statement. I changed things around. I'd like to publicly thank Andrew Martin for the time he spent with me last Friday. He was approachable and personable. He was forthright, comprehensive, and expansive in his answers to my questions, and professional in his comments to my opinionated observations as a citizen. Stuart is laughing, he knows what's coming. I'm pleased to see that Dillon was here, because it provided a lot of context to some of the initial concerns I had. It looks like I'm going to be the only guy that's representing the citizenry for the last shot in public here. So some of the things I've prepared, she's answered, and I'm really pleased. And I got to say, you did a good job on the second draft. It's much superior to the first one. Good job so far, thank you. I heard somewhere that a viable economy needs to grow at a rate of about 2%. More people into an area alone does not a viable economy make. More people working at a sustainable rate of income optimizes an economy. Cachey Development's proposing to add 677 units to Wilmot Township's residential base, plus a hypothetical employment area, and it's hypothetical, it appears at this point. It's my opinion that this second proposal is a much improved version over that snow fence, six stories originally. Thank you very much to Cache for this. But why does Wilmot need another subdivision of micro-sized units, not that many family-sized homes? Well, the answer is more units mean more tax money, and there's a perceived lack of accommodations in Ontario. But is there a lack of units in Wilmot, or is there a lack of affordable family-sized housing in Wilmot? How much do we need? Wilmot's Development Applications Listing webpage indicates that the township has increased capacity already coming online, and I got a list of 13 developments off the list. And now we have the one on Nafseger Road. It indicates that we're looking at about 2,288 to 2,728 units, able to enclose somewhere between 5,500 and 11,000 additional residents in Wilmot. That's a growth of about 45% over the present population. The numbers indicate we should be economically booming. Our budget says otherwise. How much does it cost? An experienced man once suggested that an affordable home is one where a person could live on their family's income, such that they could save for a 10% deposit down on a home purchase, and then afford to pay off the mortgage's combined interest and principal over 25 years maximum, and thus own their own home. That was sort of the principle that we've been fortunately living on, and the mayor's aspiring to. Oh, and Howard's two kids in the basement, yeah. So how much does it cost? In my opinion, it's Wilmot's issue, like the rest of Ontario. It's not potential availability of units, but the actual affordability of family-sized homes. It appears that the reason for the price of a home in 2025 is disproportionately expensive is because of the price of land. You got to put more on a smaller space to make profit. There's a friend of mine works in a large construction contractor in Ontario, and the word is, quote, "The greatest profit in home building is taken by the developer," unquote. There's a reason why developers, mostly using other people's money, can live in Mississauga with very large homes and multiple garages for their multiple vehicles, with artificial ice rinks in their backyards, and who would never probably live in the places they build. But we need them, developers are essential. A method of calculating population density is the number of person jobs per hectare. This development proposal that I listed above, the 13, indicate a large percentage of 45%. But where are the jobs? And you see, I keep looking at that diagram, and there they are. I personally am supportive of carefully regulated growth. It's good for our economy, it's good for our community. Developers are an essential component in our growth. They need appropriate support, but they also need, in my opinion, supervisory controls to direct and regulate their products to meet the needs and the wants of their potential customers. Wilmot's recent budget process clarified that the township has an extreme dependency upon residential taxation and is hampered by a disproportionately low amount of commercial and industrial assessment. We need to grow Wilmot's number of commercial and industrial jobs to bring back a degree of balance. Cachey's proposal, in my opinion, in spite of its micro-sized units, has advantages over other proposals on that list of 13, that potentially, and it potentially provides jobs. Cachey has the potential to be a person jobs application if they are directed to develop them during subsequent discussions with the township. The Cachey application does not describe future land ownership in the employment lands. Who's going to own that after they've taken, built their things and gone? I'm supportive of the much improved Cachey development proposal, but with caveats that regulates its evolution into reality. Some of these have been addressed, some of them I didn't know about, so I'm just putting it on the record again, if you will. There needs to be, A, family-sized homes, and B, affordable housing applied to this development.
One minute remaining.
One minute, holy son of a gun. More units are too small. Okay, second point, the installation of potable wastewater trunk lines must be totally paid upfront by Cache. The region needs to install the roundabout at Steinman, it needs to install roundabouts at the two exit roads, it needs to install an overpass at Highway number seven. As a, here's the biggies, got to give me 60 seconds to get all of these in. As is condition of subdivision approval, in my opinion, the developer in Wilmot Township will negotiate a staged plan of development, such that it may proceed in six stages. All infrastructure services must be installed, potable waste in the proposed employment lands simultaneously to those services being installed in the residential blocks. Cachey may then construct 200 units in the residential portion during Phase 1. Cachey must construct buildings, I see images, in the employment lands that provide for at least 50 jobs in Phase 2.
If I can get you to wrap up, Barry.
I'm getting real close. Okay, so the third stage is 200 residential homes, fourth stage is 50 more jobs in the employment stage, fifth stage is the 600th, the 200 balance. The last one, the blue apartment building may be built only after the first five are finished, that's Phase 6, limited to four stories so that it complies with parking limitations. And here's my brainstorm, please be patient with me. This is creativity, and it's an opportunity for marketing for Cache.
If you want to just get to your point, Barry, please.
You got it. Cachey is encouraged to make contact connections with medical schools to get prospective general practitioners and registered nurses lined up to practice on the ground floor of the apartment building. This development will be adding somewhere between 1,500 and 3,000.
Okay, Barry, I'm going to have to ask you to stop. I do get the gist of where you are going. You have gone well over a minute and a half of your time, and I know that you do have counselors. Does anyone have questions for Barry at this time? Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, no question. I'd just be asking, will you be submitting your notes for the public meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Dunstall?
I didn't have a question for Barry, thank you. I did want to make a comment. I've had so many people reach out to me about this development and about the size of the development, and so I did a little bit of research. And from '95 to 2014, the average immigration into Canada was 210,000 people per year. From 2015 to 2024, it was 390,000 per year. That's an increase of 85.7%, which I think is probably one of the main reasons, or certainly a big contributor to why we are where we are. So I just wanted to put that out there so that people understand the numbers that we're looking at. Thank you.
We need houses, and we need jobs for every one of them.
Any other questions or comments, counselors? Seeing none, thank you very much, Barry, for joining us this evening, and we do look forward to your official notes being sent to us as well. Are there any other individuals in the gallery or virtually that would like to speak to committee regarding this matter?
Through the mayor, there is one individual who is participating virtually that would like to speak to council.
Okay, I will let you add them into. Okay, I will let you add them into the room and on the screen. Pierre, I believe that you're joining us virtually. Once you are on, you will have seven minutes to address council.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is Pierre Chauvin. I'm with MHBC Planning, and here representing Stromma Developments Inc., who own lands to the east of Nafsigar Road. I believe Michelle referred to them as agricultural lands to the east of the Cachet development, but I should note that they are within the township urban area. And we are making plans, we've had meetings with staff already for pre-consultation to move these lands forward. I want to be clear that we are not opposed to development, or opposed to Cachet's development anyway, but what we're here to advise council and staff is that we are interested in the servicing scheme developed by Cachet for their lands as part of our lands drain in that direction for sanitary purposes. And so we want to ensure that the sores that are being designed are adequately sized to accommodate added depth, to accommodate to our clients' lands as well. So we have asked for a meeting with developers through staff. That hasn't happened yet, but we hopefully, we look forward to that opportunity to further discuss it with our engineering consultants and Cachet's engineering consultants to, I'm sure, come to a mutually agreeable resolution. So those are my comments, and happy to answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chauvin. Councillors, any questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, and I do believe that staff will be in touch to help continue with those plans as you were discussing. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. One last time, are there any members either in the gallery or attending virtually that would like to address council on this matter? None, only. Okay, seeing none. Are there any final comments or questions, councillors? Again, this tonight is receiving for information. Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Just something of note that sort of piqued my interest a little bit was the discussion of phasing of building. I know typically when we get further down the road, we see potential planned phases. But based on the notes that are presented by the public, I wouldn't mind seeing some more information back on how much control we actually have over that. That would be all, thank you.
I believe staff are taking that as direction. All right, seeing no other questions, and noting that Councillor Kressman continues to have a conflict on this matter, I will call the vote, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto the rest of our agenda, that's the remainder of our formal planning public meetings. This evening, we did have three delegations registered, two of whom have already spoken, and our last one is registered to speak to Item 10.1. And when we get to that point, it will also be Mr. Wolf again, so when we get to that point, I will call him up. We have no correspondence for committee of the whole. We do have a pretty large consent agenda item, so if any members would like to remove any items from consent, now would be the time to do so. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Salin, and through you, I have two. One is 9.3, the Public Works Operations Centre.
If you want to start with that one, you can go ahead.
So, thank you, through you, Mayor Salin. My question, and I don't know, Mayor, if you will allow much discussion. It is related in the sense that it's asking the question on salt. I think we're looking at what the noise was, I don't know. Looking at salt, salt storage. That part of this plan is about increasing our capacity for storing salt. I think about the environmental concerns in terms of our salt usage. What I read about is how the salt that we use in the wintertime goes into rivers, into the land, it affects agriculture, and even affects our Great Lakes. So this question is to Director Mullenhaus. If there is consideration for alternate uses, then salt. You know, at the same time, I hear people saying, when we have an ice storm, when we have a lot of snow, when we have icy roads, there is a request for more salting and not less. And so I realize as a township, we have liability concerns. At the same time, I'm wondering about the environmental impact.
Director Mullenhaus?
Through you, Chair. So with respect to the report, what speaks to Phase 1 of the master plan, the salt dome replacement is actually related to growth as well as replacing an aging piece of infrastructure. And so that item was approved in this year's capital budget. Just wanted to make that point, that when we talk about the element of growth, there is more space needed for salt storage and other material storage that we would be implementing through this Phase 1 of the plan. And so that's kind of the overarching Phase 1. When we talk about salt use, at this point, I'll say that we have standard practice in terms of material use. The material use, we could look at different types of materials, or we could look at different treatments. However, we don't really have much of a, I'll say, a unit for research and development, we'll say. And so we don't look to lead those on our own behalf. We look to other townships, and we look to other cities in the area that might use other types of treatments. And then we try to learn from them, and then implement if possible, and practical for us. In terms of salt use, we do operate with SMART about salt practices, and so that's a reductive method to reduce our salt use. So for example, operationally, we'll apply salt to centerline when we are applying material. And so that's a method of reduction, because we could be looking at a lane application as opposed to centerline, and so if we're looking at a lane application, that would be double the salt use. We also look at environmental factors, and we look at locations that environmentally that may benefit from different types of clearing versus salt use. And so we use those types of SMART about salt practices to reduce our salt use.
Any follow-up questions? Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Actually, following up on Councillor Martin, and forgive my ignorance, but could we use sand instead of salt, or is that just not a viable option?
We do use a sand-salt blend in particular locations, but it really comes down to the type of road and what the most effective material to use in that particular application. There are locations where we do use a pickled sand, and so that is a mixed, we'll say, type of sand-salt operation. But there aren't very many applications of sand alone that we could utilize in terms of road operations.
Any other questions on Item 9.3, councillors? Okay, seeing none. Councillor Martin, did you say that there was another item on the consent agenda you wanted to pull? Nope, you can go ahead.
Yes, actually, winter operations, 9.5.
Please speak to it.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Salin. And again, I guess this is a question back to Director Mullenhaus. We did have a conversation in the wintertime about some streets where people were parking on the road. And so when I look at the winter operations plan, I'm just curious if there's anything further that we can do, whether it's public information. I believe there was one storm in particular where some streets close to where I live, people were parked on the street, and it was very difficult for the plows to get through. So I'm wondering, is this a conversation here? Should we talk about it elsewhere? Is there something that council can do on the winter operations to help in difficult circumstances when there's a lot of snow, and it's very difficult for you to do your job?
Through you, Chair. So I think with respect to winter operations in the plan, maybe back to the last item, and I apologize, but that's something we can also report back on in terms of salt use, and we can speak to that element. Related to parking in particular, so when we have a snow event declared, that's when we have a parking prohibition across the township. And so those are locations that would normally have, say, on-street parking illegally, but we restrict that obviously through the course of the event. My suggestion would be, in those particular moments, I think we're sort of new in terms of the use of snow events and how we restrict parking. And so maybe we can be a little more difficult about enforcement than we've been trying to work with residents on some of that more recently, because it is somewhat new. But I would say on the enforcement side, that might be something that we can explore a little bit more. We do make efforts to communicate corporately and try to work through communications to identify those parking restrictions. And so I would say, I don't think that's necessarily going to always solve the problem in terms of parking during winter storms, but we do rely on the public as well to be good neighbors and to stay off the roadway while we do our best to clear. And there are times when we don't see that in operations. And so I think enforcement might be another method to continue with better operational practices for snow clearing.
Councillor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor. This was also the item I wanted to pull. I noticed with interest the difference between a significant weather event and a snow event. And that was new to me. I think I knew about the snow event and not parking on the roads, but a significant weather event, I think, at least it's my impression, that there's others in the township that would benefit from understanding when a significant weather event is declared, that plows are pulled off the road because of the weather, and their expectations should be reduced in terms of what they're going to experience when they get on the roads. So I see this as a tremendous opportunity to educate, well, inform. I like the word inform rather than educate, because there's lots of people that like to educate me. But inform and communicate with the public and differentiate the two events and what they would mean in terms of their experience on the roads. So that's a comment rather than a question, but is this new terminology for us here?
Through you, Chair. I would say it's not necessarily new to this term of council. We had it in place, I think, the last term of council. So we've been using it for a period of time. I would suggest with the significant weather events, it's not very often that we call them, because essentially the declaring of that type of environment means that we can't keep up with the event. And so that just gives us the opportunity to, I'll say, delay our response, if you will, or we could have a longer response, that's allowed under the minimum maintenance standard. If we look at the maintenance standard, we have a certain timeframe based on a certain snowfall event to respond. And if it's significant enough and we can't keep up, we do need to have an ability to, we'll say, pause the regulation in terms of our timelines to clear snow. And so when we look at the use of a significant weather event, we haven't really had very many over the last four years. That being said, though, you're correct, it is an opportunity to inform and to continue the dialogue, because they are certainly things that we can benefit from.
Thank you very much, Director. Any other questions, councillors, on Item 9.5? Okay, seeing none. Does anybody have any other items that they would like to speak to on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would then look for a mover and a seconder for Items 9.1 through to 9.6 to be approved, moved by Councillor Dunstall, seconded by Councillor Kressman, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto our reports for this evening. Our first report is the CAO 2025-08 Governance Policy on HR-001: Hiring and Termination of Employees. The recommendation is that report CAO-2025-08 Governance Policy: Hiring and Termination of Employees be received for information, and that council direct staff to present an updated HR policy with best practice recommendations on recruitment for review and consideration at the June committee meeting of the whole. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor Dunstall. And I will invite our acting CAO and Director of Corporate Services Greg Clark to introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to council. So this came from a notice of motion put forward by Councillor Wilkinson, requesting that we look at a number of items that he identified, including when positions become vacant, how they're filled, the process for reviewing those, including the potential of having council have a role in that process. This report highlights the initial steps that we've taken. So we do have an existing policy that is due for review, and is on our agenda for this year to review. As well, we've conducted a municipal scan, so we've reached out to our competitors in the Golden Triangle and received eight responses. Unfortunately, they're not willing to share those publicly, but as I discussed earlier today with the mayor, if there is interest in seeing those policies, we may be able to share them internally with council, considering that they're internal policies to each of those municipalities. And so they prefer to keep them confidential. But we're more than happy to discuss with them, making them available to council. And as the report highlights, the key thing is that the realm of interaction for council is typically limited to approving of positions through the budget process, so ensuring that new positions are created in a robust and transparent manner that aligns with service delivery expectations, fiscal responsibility, and ensuring that those jobs are created in the best interest of the township and put forward to be hired within the administration's purview. So at the end of the day, that is where typically, for new positions or any positions, council's role ends. And then after that point, administration takes over, following HR practices for recruitment and identification of the successful candidate, hiring, termination, rehiring when positions become vacant, the exception being the role of the CAO, which is entirely at the discretion of council to hire and recruit for. And that is typically what we've seen in this policy that we've reviewed. In terms of what we'll bring back in June, we'll bring back a revised policy that outlines the practices that we think are beneficial from some of the other municipalities. In talking to Manager Kelly about this, she feels that there's a number of opportunities for us to improve our internal policy, so we will bring that back to council in June for your review and approval. And one of the things that we are considering is separating out the CAO hiring from the general policy for internal, to keep it more transparent between what council's realm is and what administration's realm is in staffing decisions and hiring and those types of things. So if there's any questions at this time?
Thank you. Questions at all councillors? Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Happy to see that this is moving. And I certainly appreciate the commentary, or at least the observation, that council's role is essentially, for the most part, in terms of approving new positions, which is typically done during budget season and results in spending of new money. I think in terms of the spirit of where I was coming from with this policy is not so much that we want to be involved in the hiring or how a role is sort of defined by a department, but I think it's important, as we look at cost control measures and opportunities for savings for the taxpayer, if a position becomes vacant, I don't think we can leave it just to sole discretion of administration to make that call as to whether or not it should continue or not. It's likely that you would assume they would want it to continue and want that budget. The spirit of where I'm coming from is that it would be council's discretion to review that, look at what services are provided and associated with the particular position that may be open, and then make a call as to whether or not they want to continue to fund that or choose to find different ways to address any of the servicing that is done by a particular position. So I see it as a potential for tighter control and review and a cost-saving measure, potentially. So that's where I was coming from with the spirit of it, and I still think it's a good idea, personally.
Just on that point, I understand what you're saying, councillor. In the spirit of what you're trying to get at, I know other municipalities, and CAO Clark, if you have thoughts on this, but other municipalities do almost like a rotation of service-level reviews. So instead of it being kind of ad hoc on when a position becomes vacant, in this scenario, which is what- which is what it would kind of suggest through doing it through this policy, instead council would have the ability to get a deep overview in certain departments each year on service levels. And then from that perspective, to discuss, is it appropriate to have the number of staff that are there and do more of an in-depth review of an entire department or an entire service area, instead of just on an ad hoc basis of when we happen to not have an employee filling a role? I just put that out there for thought because I know other municipalities do it on kind of a cycle throughout council that they almost, I think in theory, the idea is that they almost go through the whole organization in the four years of having an assessment like that. And that might just be more systematic of an approach versus just when somebody happens not to be in the role. And perhaps achieve the spirit of what you're saying, but keep the policy as is. But councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. I don't disagree with what you're saying. And I think, just from my perspective thus far, I don't know, and I realize there's been some change, and it's been difficult to maybe bring that review forward. But that would be something that I would hope that we see even towards the end of this term because I'm not sure that we've seen a ton of it, at least from my perspective so far. I think ultimately where this is coming from is what would happen. And again, I realize we're a public corporation, we're funded publicly, we're a municipality to serve the citizens that live here. But ultimately, looking at it from a private sector lens, is that any time headcount comes into question or that there's an opening, I would suggest that the manager who's responsible for that cost center will absolutely look at that position and review whether or not is required. And to a certain extent, while I trust and like our directors and think they do a great job, I just think we're at a point with our budget and where things have gone that the public are looking for an extended review from a council perspective. So what I'd like to see is maybe there's a hybrid or a compromise to be had here. I don't know what that is. But it's something I'd certainly be willing to discuss as we move forward. But again, we're still very preliminary here as we move towards June with a report. But my eyes towards what can we potentially do from a cost-saving perspective? And that could be reviewing headcount as it becomes available.
And I'm just looking to staff. I'm assuming that'll be taking us direction into your report back. Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I disagree with councillor Wilkinson, and that's totally fair. I think that that's a governance issue. I'm hoping that if we actually do get an opportunity to implement lean government, there's certainly a huge impact in there on duplications and that kind of thing. My issue with councillor Wilkinson's recommendation, and I certainly understand what he's saying, especially finishing with that budget that we did, but I mean, I'm looking at these things that our HR person sent out. Open positions, supervisor of information technology, ERP project manager, supervisor of taxation, manager of parks and facilities, senior policy planner. I don't have the knowledge to be able to tell you if you actually need that role or not. So I think that hopefully, if we can get lean and with our directors, who do a good job, that we leave that piece to them. That's my comment. Thank you.
Councillor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor. And again, there's aspects of this resolution, to my mind, that are micromanagement. Again, if you go back to governance, there's responsibilities that accrue to council and there's responsibilities that accrue to staff. I think it's more important, and I think certainly the Six Sigma discussion as we look at the organization, as well as trying to look at the services that we provide from a client-based perspective. How do we present ourselves as a corporation to clients who interface with us either for a building or for taxation or whatever? I think that determines our service to our community. And I think that's how we evaluate our service. What kind of things do we, you know, customer-facing people? And I think that's the piece. I know this was a discussion at breakfast this last Friday when the CEO of the family was there, and he was discussing that as something that he stresses to his staff repeatedly. Look at these things from your client's perspective and get a view of how you are performing from their perspective so that you can evaluate your service levels. That's just my two cents now that I can talk.
Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that. One of the things that I found really interesting and really important in the lean government, which is the Six Sigma for government, was that there was a piece on there about making our processes much more efficient so that we could get rid of that will-not and make it much easier for our constituents to get done what they need to get done. Just as you said, councillor Kressman, which is exactly what you said. I think I just said it better, but you said it too. Thank you.
Any other questions is really what I was looking for. We still have a delegate on this, but any other questions at this time, councillors? Okay, seeing none, I will invite up our delegate on this item, and that is Mr. Barry Wolf. And you will have seven minutes. And thank you for continuing to stick around during your meeting.
Boy, you're not glad I'm back, right? I apologize for, I missed most of it. I was networking. And I'm a little off topic, but I got to tell you, I am really pleased, as a person, as a citizen, reflecting on a conversation that I just had with the representatives from Dillon and Cache. They are really open. They are really open to negotiations on some of the stuff that you mentioned and that I was advocating for there. I think we've got a chance with that development to really go places. And they heard me with the jobs. They've got a plan. The Cache guy said, Marcus said, 150 to 200 homes. That's the most they do at a phase, and they're going to look at jobs. Another 150, 200, they're going to look at jobs.
Barry, I'm very happy to hear that you had a great conversation.
Seven minutes!
I know. I just want to keep you on topic about the policy.
Anyway, I apologize for missing most of the conversation, so I'm going to keep it focused. I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else here, and I'm concerned about corporate creep, meaning the corporation creeps larger and larger and larger. And that decision is made at budget time. That's when you fix it. But sometimes what happens in the hiring process internally is they will hire a .5 July to December. That's in the budget, but it rolls over and it becomes an add-on to the new budget because the person's not gone. That's something that's common in practice, and it's, in my opinion, sneaky. It's what I call corporate creep. So whenever you work out in process, I put that as a concern I've got. One of the other things is, you mentioned get it done. We've got to get it done. But as a citizen, we also got to know what it is you want to get done and who wants to get it done. We want information. And I refer to this policy, HR-002. That's the existing policy. It's public. And I read in here, page three of the report, human resources staff conducted a municipal scan through the HR Golden Triangle network to review any comparable termination policies, comparable in the HR Golden Horseshoe. We're not comparable to the Golden Horseshoe. They are not comparable municipalities. We need municipalities that look like us. It said eight responded, and it said, this is what concerns me. The responding municipalities have requested the policies not be shared publicly as they are all internal policies. Yes, this is an internal policy, and it's a public document. Every policy and every municipality might be for internal use, but it's a public document. I reject, as a citizen, that statement. In the interests of this community's transparency, you have a right to see the eight comparable policies. I have a right to see the eight comparable policies. There was a previous report presented to council about the corporate staff council relations policy, and it made reference to 15 comparable policies. And in a majority of them, they aligned in structure and content with the recommended policy. I did a Google municipal scan. One of the policies aligned in structure, like it looked to be laid out the same. None of them aligned in contact. The recommended policy says will report. All of them, one of them, two of them, I think, large municipalities may consult. So it did not. So the report, from my analysis of the policies I was able to found, showed that the contents of the report should be questioned. So I'm saying, I'm not defying it, I'm not stating anything about human resources here, but I want to see what's there. I want to have the right to be able to see the comparable policies because I don't want them to be cherry-picked. You can find eight municipalities to agree with you, but what about the comparable municipalities that look like us? Those are the ones that I want to see. I have an FOI request in right now, looking for those, I had an FOI policy, asking for the 15 comparables. You know what the answer was? They don't exist in the municipality. You kidding me? We wrote a report, used 15 comparable municipalities, and those policies don't exist here? Where did they come from? Where are the eight? Who are the eight? What are the eight? What do they say? If it all says that, I'm a happy camper. I've got no problem with that. Well, when you say I can't see, I'm like the dog that wants the bone, right? Don't tease me like that. So what I want council to do is say, give direction to your staff that those eight comparable policies will be made available to you and to the public. They're public documents. Just because it says they are, doesn't mean that they can. Those are public documents. I want to see them. I don't want to spend another $5 and another $25 and appeal to the Information Policy Commissioner in Toronto to get them, like I'm doing with a lot of other stuff. Transparency is a word that's used in this municipality, but it's not practiced. So, back to you. Can I have a look at the eight? Please make sure that they're made available. I want to see them. Just because I'm told I can't, I'm like that. I'm stubborn. I'm 76. I'm old. Anyway, that's the way it is. I leave that with you. If you've got comments, I'll be sitting listening. Thank you, Mayor, for not cutting me off because I did it in under seven minutes.
You did do it in under seven minutes. Thank you very much, Barry, for delegating on that. Councillors, any questions for our delegate? Councillor Wilkinson?
Sorry, through the chair. Not a question for the delegate. I was prepared to move forward.
Okay, yep. So no questions for the delegate then? Seeing none. So councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair. So I will certainly, if I can give direction, I guess at least my interest, that I would like to see the eight policies. I suppose the question should be asked to CAO clerk or, sorry, CAO Clark or the clerk. Is the policy, is it governed by the municipal act in the sense that it's another governing body sharing information with us that they've asked to keep confidential? Would that prevent it from becoming public? Essentially, is it governed by the closed-meeting protocol?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the councillor. I don't believe so. I would have to look and see whether there is any actual protection from it being FOI-able. The one thing I will caution is our friends may not be as willing to share with us. I'm just going to caution that.
Councillor?
Through the chair. That's well understood. So I suppose I would still stand and say I'd like to see them if they're distributed to council. And then we can have a further conversation, I suppose, where we go from here regarding making them public or not making them public, whatever that happens to be.
Just give me one moment to consult with the clerk/CAO. Staff are accepting that, that they will go about making it accessible to council and continue to pursue the other question that you were asking about, beyond council information. Any other questions or comments then on this motion before I call the vote? Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. I suppose this is committee of whole, but that will be reflected in what comes forward then for council at the end of the month, that direction, either in meeting minutes or as part of an expanded report?
So I just want to clarify, it will be in the meeting minutes that that direction was given in committee, and my assumption is that that will happen in the near future. But I will look to the CAO just because I think it might happen before the meeting.
It'll be there for council.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. We'll take it as direction to share with council before the committee of the whole meeting. And then to the second point of discussing whether it's releasable or not or what the ramifications of that are. We will also report back to council before the final council meeting at the end of the month.
Okay, councillor Kressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to the CAO clerk. I would imagine if they tell us they want us to share it, it goes without saying that they don't want us to share it. You know, it goes back to, here's the report you requested, but keep it internal. And if we get beat up because of it, that is, Barry, you're going to have to make the point to those municipalities. It's not to us that restricted this information. So I think we're barking up the wrong tree, or eight trees, but that's just me on this one.
I think at this point, we can leave it in staff's capable hands to bring back that information to council and whether they seek out legal advice or what that looks like. That point certainly taken, councillor Kressman. So the motion is already moved and seconded. It is to receive for information and to continue to direct staff to bring in updated policy with best practices. The direction to staff has already been taken, so that's not in the motion itself. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Dunstall, is that a hand up? Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to confirm. All right, I will call the vote then. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Onto report 10.2, and this is the 2023 audited financial statements. The recommendation is that council approves the 2023 audited financial statements as included in report COR-2025-07. May I have a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by councillor Kressman, seconded by councillor Martin. And I will turn it back over to acting CAO Clark to introduce the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to council. So finally, after much ado and a lot of work, the 2023 financial statements are in front of you for approval. And I think we've discussed this a number of times. The delays were a number of issues and items. At the end of the day, we have completed the audit. And as it states in the report, the only qualification is related to asset retirement obligations, which were a new standard introduced as part of the 2023 audit process. The rest of our statements are unqualified, meaning that the auditors found no issues or items of concern and feel that they fairly and accurately reflect the financial situation of the township. In terms of ARO, just to clarify a little bit, this is a new standard that came in, and the intention is for municipalities to quantify future liabilities related to certain types of assets, primarily related to contamination, but also legal obligations through leasehold improvements or other type of legal arrangements, where the municipality is obligated to spend funds at some future date to remediate a legal obligation. So the primary one that municipalities are encountering is asbestos and buried fuel tanks. And in our situation, as our statements articulate, we do have some known asbestos within some facilities. The difficulty with this standard is that it requires a lot of estimation and approximation of quantity, dollar value, timing. of quantity, dollar value, timing. And when I arrived in April of last year, we had not undertaken that work at that time. And so there's still a bit of work to be done, and we're hopeful that we'll get them as part of 2024. But ultimately, what that number represents is some future obligation. So an example would be this building, if there's asbestos contained within it, whether it's in the heating, pipes, insulation, or other types of materials, similar to wall panels, ceiling panels. At some point in time, when we remediate this building in 30 years, or renovate this building in 30 years, we'll have to deal with that. However, at that time, we'll also have to deal with the entire cost of renovating the building. So for example, renovation could be $30 million in 30 years, $1 million of that being related to asbestos. The standard requires us to record that $1 million related to the asbestos, but not the other $29 million. And so that's, that's the distinction. It's only that portion of a facility, and that's where the difficulty lies in articulating how much asbestos, the type of remediation, and those types of things. One note on the obligation, it is encompassed within asset management. So when we look at asset management, we're looking at renewal of facilities holistically. So we would be looking at that total $30 million. So it's not that the number is not on the horizon, it's not that it's not something that's being contemplated, it's not something represented in our financial statements. So if there's further questions on that, I'm more than happy to talk ARO. It's a really exciting topic at all of our municipal events, but we will be recording that for 2024. The second part that's obviously much more significant, more pertinent to us, is that we are once again running a deficit of approximately $4.3 million for year ended 2023, and this continues deficits that we've run over the last number of years. And this, this deficit represents our operating deficit, so it's a bit different than our budget in that we bring in things like depreciation and we exclude things like transfers to reserve and debt payment. So it presents our statements in a more, I guess what you would call private sector business methodology, and so that's why we end up with a deficit, even though we have a balanced budget. When you incorporate capital and the funding that we receive for capital, so things like OSIF or ICIF funding or federal gas tax, and put that towards capital expenditures, then we do typically break even on an annual basis, but that's an after capital. So typically, most municipalities want to see that their operating is running a surplus, meaning that we're putting more funds into our reserves than we're drawing out through depreciation. And so that's really what that number represents. Our depreciation is outstripping the amount of funds that we're collecting to put towards, towards capital renewal. And so that's obviously something we'll continue to address through budget as we move forward. 2025, we've already taken a significant step towards that, and in future years, we'll hope to close that gap. So if there's, and one last final point, Graham Matthews was our auditor on this audit. This is their final year with us. In 2024, we have a new auditor onboard, MNP, out of their Kitchener office, and they have a wealth of municipal experience. They have a number of clients in a similar size to us within southwestern Ontario, and we're really excited to be partnering with them. We've already engaged with them and begun the 2024 audit process, and they have been engaged for a five-year term, which is standard practice in alignment with the municipal act. So any questions from council? I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Counselor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor, to Acting CAO Clark and our CFO. Certainly found this very interesting. I could spend the whole evening going over each of these pages. I think we, as a council, could learn a lot. I know just in our discussions this evening before the meeting, I learned a lot, as well as from your presentation. I looked on page 11 of the draft budget, and it talks about the depreciation schedule of water and wastewater. And in your comments about the fact that we aren't keeping up with our depreciation of our underground assets and the assets that we own as a, as a township, we see water and wastewater as a 75-year straight line depreciation, yet I saw some items we deferred as being end-of-life for, I think they were installed in 1971 in Baden. There were some side streets that were installed in 1971. And so I asked myself the question, have we, are we too slow in our amortization of some of our underground assets? Is that we didn't do it right in terms of installs in the, in the 60s and 70s? And have we an unfunded liability that's coming up that even worse than we anticipated that's going to bite us? Well, bite us, let's just put it there, stop there.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the counselor. So yeah, you've identified one of the critical things in the difference between financial statements and amortization versus asset management. So financial statements are based on laws of averages, so we take every water pipe and every wastewater pipe in Ontario, and we apply sort of a standard engineering practice that says we expect them to live 75 years. In practice, that is not always the case, as Director Mullenhus can attest to, based on soil condition, you know, material type, installation practices, things do differ. And that's where asset management plays such a critical role. It takes what is historically recorded as an asset and depreciated over, you know, an estimated time, and turns it into the reality of when does it need to be replaced? How much is it going to cost to be replaced? Because the other thing you have to remember is that depreciated value is on a historical cost, so the cost of installing it in 1970 versus cost of replacing it in 2025. So it is definitely one of the big differences between what you'll see in a financial statement versus what you'll see in an asset management plan.
Just, just one follow-up before I have my colleagues ask further questions. Should we, the point that you made about our deficit when we take into account our depreciation, should that be highlighted more in our public-facing comments to get our public aware of, of the precarious situation we're, we're currently in?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to counselor. So, you know, nothing like stealing my thunder tonight, but the mayor and I have been discussing planning of a public education and a council education session for June that will deal with municipal 101 finance, so not really getting into the nitty-gritty of budget impacts and where we spend money, but really the nuts and bolts of what does an operating deficit mean from a financial statement to a budget, and how do you relate those two? How does that relate to your tax rates? So we are planning that. And so now that that gets out of the bag, you'll be hearing more about that this week as we confirm some dates and get that approved. But yes, definitely, it is one of those things that needs to be highlighted so that the public understands what this represents versus the budget, versus asset management, versus master planning, and how those all relate from a finance perspective.
Any additional questions, councilors? Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Just want to say that's a great idea. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the audited statements? Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair. One thing I had made a note to comment on was to ask specifically about the auditors. I think that's a conversation we've had for a few years, so glad to see movement on that and bringing in a fresh set of eyes. But overall, I mean, just in general, reading their, their top summary and then through the report, obviously, you know, we are filing things and doing things appropriately, and there's no major issues with it, which is fantastic. So thank you for putting this together.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will call the vote. All those in favor, and that carries unanimously. On to 10.3, and this is final tax levy rates and due dates, and the report, the recommendation is that the report be received and that council consider bylaw 25-19 being a bylaw to set the tax rates and due dates for the final billing of property taxes for 2025. May I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Martin. I will turn it back over to Acting CAO and CFO Clark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to council. So this is the second piece of approving our tax rates. So we approve interim rates earlier in the year while we're still preparing the budget. This is the final rates based on actual approved budget, so it takes the actual levy requirement, which is $14.2 million roughly, and allocates it based on our assessment base, develops the mill rates, as they're called, and applies those in the system. So approval of this is standard practice based on the budget that was approved, and so those will be applied, and final bills will be going out, I believe they go out by the beginning of June. And so this is a pretty standard practice for council.
Any questions or comments on this, councilors? Counselor Kressman?
Yes. Again, I'm all for communication, and is there an opportunity to communicate that your first two bills were based on last year's tax rate? These two bills will pay play catch-up for the entire year, so you can expect disproportionately high taxes for the third quarter and the final bill. So something to that effect, but I was just looking, looking again to try to communicate to the general public that, you know, they won't take the second payment they made and compare it to the third and the fourth, and say, wow, look at how much it's changed, that they have the rationale why the change was there.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the counselor. So one of the projects that's ongoing right now within the communications team is an update to our website. So we are changing platforms in our website, and so this particular section in terms of tax, you know, tax collection 101, is on that slate of sites, portions of the site that'll be updated. And I think definitely we can do an improved job of communicating how your tax payments work and how they're related to last year's, this year's, and next year's. And so we will definitely be looking to implement some improvements in that communication, as well as an insert about the portion of taxes that stay in the township and the portion that goes to the region, the portion that goes to the province for educator, to the school boards, and also breaking down a bit by service, where your tax dollars within Wilmot go. So we are working on an insert with that final tax bill that will break down some of that language, and then that'll also be available on the website.
Just one, just through you, Mayor, did I get all the right segues of what you wanted to say?
Thank you, Counselor Kressman. Any other comments or questions, councilors? Okay. Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor, and that carries unanimously. On to report 10.4, and the recommendation is that IS-2025-10 Baden Sanitary Trunk Sewer Cost Sharing Agreement be received, and that council consider bylaw 2025-20 being a bylaw that authorizes the mayor and the clerk to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the region of Waterloo for reimbursement of contract of administrative fees and construction costs related to the regional Baden Sanitary Forest Main to be included within the Baden Trunk Sanitary Sewer project. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. And I will turn it over to our Director of Infrastructure Services, Mr. Mullenhus.
Thank you, Chair. So this report requests permission to enter into an agreement with the region of Waterloo to install a portion of the Forest Main that they had contemplated through their master planning exercises for Baden and New Hamburg for wastewater services. The portion of Forest Main would be obviously within our construction limit of our project, and so this is a benefit to, to the project areas. We can implement it through our construction contracts, and it would be easier to do now as well. It will be collaborative efforts in terms of we're already out there and we're doing our portion of work, and so there is some cost savings to, to the region as well. But in addition to that, it will also reduce any future service disruptions or closures that may be needed in installing future Forest Main activity. And so this report is requesting that permission to enter into an agreement so that we can implement that portion of work on their behalf.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, councilors? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, and that also carries unanimously. That is the end of our reports. I do have a few announcements this evening. I wanted to start off by noting that I was saddened to learn that the former longtime township of Wilmot employee, Thomas Hale, recently passed away. So on behalf of council, I wanted to extend our deepest condolences to the Hale family, as well as all of Mr. Hale's former township colleagues. Last week, I had the pleasure of meeting with the Waterloo Regional Police Services to discuss township safety matters, and WRPS has recently launched their rural policing strategy. This is, has the goal of increasing rural responsiveness while embracing collaborative partnerships and community engagements with the township. Their aim is to continue to strengthen public safety and community well-being, and it is a key element of what created the rural sergeant position to serve and as a liaison to the townships. If you do have any WRPS concerns as a resident, your best point of contact now is specifically our rural sergeant. So please do feel free to email either my office if you'd like to learn more about the strategy, or you can connect directly with Sergeant James Hoiser directly at rulsgt@wrps.on.ca. I wanted to say a huge congratulations to the New Hamburg Firebirds on becoming the Dordie Division champions yet again. And on Friday, I had the great opportunity of being at the puck drop as they are now taking on the town of Grimsby, the Peach Kings, in the next series, as well as I had the opportunity to pick up Mayor Nowak, a lovely jersey that he's going to be sporting tomorrow at his council as he's repping the nice Firebirds colors. So congratulations again to our Firebirds, and good luck in your next series. Wanted to also thank Wilmot residents who reached out with their concerns regarding traffic in and around Mannheim Road due to the regional Waterloo's closure at Trussler Road from Bleem's to Highway 78. I can hear Counselor Kressman grinning because I know he was also contacted quite a lot. And really just wanted to say a huge thank you to township staff who have installed temporary speed cushions along Mannheim Road to reduce speed and improve safety.
Three of them?
Yes. And, yes, staff, just so that you know, the community was very grateful for that response. So I did want to publicly note that and commend your team for such a quick response. Staff are continuing to work closely with the region of Waterloo, as well as regional police services, to determine if further steps need to be taken. So if you do continue to live in that area and have concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out. Another, I do have a lot of announcements tonight, but another note is that the Working Group for the Prime Minister's Path Project has developed their draft recommendations, which will be getting presented at a special council meeting on May the 12th. And the April 2nd community gathering has in fact been moved to May 28th, so that between council getting the report and having our discussion in public, that there's then another point for the public to engage yet again with the group. So again, that will be taking place on May 28th. And you can continue to stay involved on the Prime Minister's Path Project by going to www engageswr.ca-primeministers-path. And my final one, I just wanted to note that the flood warning in New Hamburg was officially lifted today, and that river flows continue to be at peak levels, although they are slowly receding, and just that residents should remain vigilant, and please do stay away from our rivers and waterways for safety reasons. Any other announcements, councilors? Counselor Kressman?
Yes, this is an ongoing announcement, but with a new date. The Heritage Day is Saturday, April the 26th, from 10 till 2 at the New Dundee Community Centre. There will be food available to be purchased, and it's celebrating families of Wilmot Township and the 175th anniversary of incorporation of Wilmot Township.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Did want to mention that on April 14th at 6:00 PM at the Pottiecombe House will be an all candidates meeting for the federal election coming up, and they are taking questions in advance. Send those to the New Hamburg Border Trade. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. And with that, Election Day is coming on April the 28th, so be sure to get out and vote federally. Any other announcements, councilors? Okay. Seeing none, I will look for a motion to adjourn. May I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Kressman. All those in favor, that carries unanimously. Have a great evening.